Depending on the final site plan, a notice of public hearing was published in the Fayetteville Observer on October 6th. We're requesting a sale price of $12,500 per acre, which would total 1.288,375 dollars and a few cents. I'm joking about the few cents on the end there. It is our estimates, based on the current assessed tax value of the properties that would be conveyed, and this was the estimate that I performed, would be approximately a value of $10,018 per acre for a total value of 984,469. I'd ask the county attorney, do you want me to complete mine, or would you like to add some things on that, on the valuation?
Yes, sir. You just go ahead.
Okay. The company would commit to creating 18 management jobs, paying an average salary of $62,000 per year, 30 clerical jobs of $28,000, and 92 warehouse jobs of $28,000. The current median salary for the county as of 2017 is $32,329 per acre. The project will add approximately $44 million in taxable investment in real and business and personal property. We're asking that you commit to the following, which would be the sale of 98.27 acres at the price previously discussed, $12,500 per acre. At the time of closing, the 10% of the proceeds would be used to, provided for consultant fees for site selection, that you would partner with the company on, to apply for infrastructure development grants, and partner for applications for state incentives. These would include the One North Carolina Fund. It takes a local application to secure customized training. We have preliminary approvals on a grant to extend gas, natural gas into your park, and a DOT grant for road improvements, signalization, and other enhancements. And lastly, that you approve awarding a performance-based cash incentive equal to 75% of the new real and personal property taxes on the site for a period of seven years. The company would have to construct the site within five years. They would have to invest and bring onto the tax books more than $40 million of new value. They would have to create 140 new full-time jobs, averaging 32,250 per job, 112 jobs being created by the end of 2019, and seven jobs added each year for the next four. And the company shall be required to execute with the county a formal incentive agreement. The next steps for this is the city council will have a hearing next week for their incentives. And the state is also considering the project for its final incentives. We have a representative from the company with us today, should you have any questions. And with that, Mr. Moorefield, I believe, and maybe some other things.
Good evening, commissioners. The resolution that you have before you is a little different than, as far as an economic development incentives package that you've considered in the last several years, and that's simply because land is part of it, of the offer of incentives. You're all familiar with the fact that we typically, when we dispose of land, have to do it subject to an upset bid process. An exception to that is when the land is part of an economic development incentives package such as this is. Even if the county, if the company is paying something for the land, that still applies. In exchange for that, the legislature through the general statutes requires that the board of commissioners make certain specific findings related to the wages, jobs created, the value of the property being conveyed, and the consideration for it. And that's what this resolution addresses. It basically just walks through the statutory requirements to make sure that the board, for the record, can find those things. And as Mr. Van Gheen said, reported, this public hearing was advertised, in the Fayetteville Observer, on October 6th. We do not have the publisher affidavit back yet, but I think attached is, was the confirmation of the order that's attached to the resolution. One thing that's significant is that there have been no sales of real property or no industries located in the industrial park. Cumberland, it's referred to as different things, but it, the actual official name of it by the recordings, it's the Cedar Creek Industrial Park, but it's also known as the Cedar Creek Business Center and the Cedar Creek Business Park. So when you hear those terms being introduced, interchanged, we're still talking about the industrial park out on Cedar Creek Road. But there have been those sales since the commencement of the development of that park for industrial development, which actually started back in 1999. With the exception of two small parcels, each of less than an acre, that are located at the park, the highest tax value of any land in the park is $17,860 an acre. The current tax values fortunately were established effective January 1st this year with the revaluation, so they're fairly current. And the market value of land on a per-acre basis typically increases as the acreage of the parcel is decreased. That's reflected in the valuation of these parcels in the industrial park. There are four larger parcels, much larger than that little half-acre parcels, from 30 acres to over, to about 140 acres. And the value that's placed on that land, which is supposed to be the fair market value under the scheduled values adopted effect this year, varies widely from about $300 an acre for wetlands to 41 cents per square foot for the prime industrial property that has good road access. Because we don't know exactly the boundaries at this point, have done a calculation to determine that it all, you know, once this new lot is created of about 98 acres, it would be a prime industrial site. It would have good road frontage, and it would be fully usable. And estimate that the value, the fair market value of that new site would be no more than the highest current value of any land in the park, the 41 cent a square foot. And at $17,860 per acre, when you convert the price per square foot to acres, you come out of a total of $1,755,102 as an estimate of fair market value. The sales price is therefore $526,727 less than that fair market value. That will also be considered an incentive, and that's proper under the statute for the board to make an incentive offer like that. As far as the consideration, the statute requires that you recapture the value, the fair market value of that land through either the sales, and of course, Mr. Van Gheens just said, they are actually paying more than a million dollars for the property at $12,500 an acre. And at the current, and you can also take into account the taxes paid, new taxes paid on the improvements constructed on the property and equipment purchased for up to 10 years. At the current county tax rate of .799, even if you just look at it at $40 million instead of $44 million, that generates about $319,600 in new taxes a year, and that greatly exceeds the amount necessary for you to, if you find, to do so, it greatly exceeds the amount for the fair market value. The project will also create an annual payroll of an excess of $4.5 million. Haven't tried to estimate the additional sales tax that would create in the county, but it would be substantial. The project would, the actual construction and the purchase of the business equipment would also create substantial sales tax. You can take all of those things into account in configuring the fair market value of the property that you're, or the considerations you're getting from the company for selling the property. And it's really important, I think, this conveyance of the property and the company, to the company will also create the first industrial development in the park. And that's, I think, a significant factor, because I think it sets the stage for maybe further development there. So if you find, if the board finds that after the public hearing, those factors to be the facts that support this grant of economic development incentives, then you can adopt the resolution as a means of approving these incentives in the manner that Mr. Van Gheens just went over a few minutes ago.
Mr. Moorefield, let me ask you, how long has the county owned this property?
Started developing it for industrial site in 1999.
And they've got how much in taxes off of that property?
Zero.
I just wanted to make sure I had that in.
Well, it's zero per year, so you have to add it all up.
Plus, plus the cost, plus what we paid to get it to the conditions. Commissioner Keith.
Mr. Moorefield, between yourself and Mr. Van Gheens, does everything in this resolution cover everything you just talked about?
Yes, sir. This, that's the reason, it's written away, it's fully addressed in the statute.
That's good. Thank you. Just call that public hearing.
Any further questions, Mr. Chairman?
I don't have any question. Anybody else got any questions? I will open the public hearing. Are there any speakers, Madam?
There are no speakers.
I will close the public hearing. And Commissioner Keith beat everybody to that.
It is my pleasure, Mr. Chairman, to recommend that we approve the resolution, economic development incentives to Project Nano II, as presented by the county attorney and the economic development executive director.
Mr. Second.
Go ahead.
Mr. Keith?
I knew I screwed it up.
No, you didn't. But would you add approval of Budget Ordinance Amendment, B-18028? That appropriates fund balance on the amount not to exceed $125,000 for any brokerage fees or costs incurred by the company in purchasing the land.
Mr. Chair, I am going to, if I can add to my motion to include budget amendment,
And the chairman seconds that motion. Now, I got you. All y'all sitting up here with all y'all lights on up here. Commissioner Evans couldn't wait to put his, go ahead.
And jointly Commissioner Council and I second that motion.
I think that's everybody up here glad, Council.
And Mr. Chair, thank you for all the hard work of our economic development folks, the attorney and the manager, to get everything together. This, you know, hopefully, I understand that it's not a done deal till it's a done deal, but I hope that your client knows that they have the support of the county commissioners with them as well as Cumberland County. Thank you.
They wanted them to stand, if they wanted to stand, but they don't want to stand.
We have their representative, Tommy Turner.
Tommy, thank you.
Welcome to Cumberland, Tommy.
All those in favor?
Unanimous.
I'm surprised you don't appreciate your taking.
Thank you very much. We're incredibly grateful for the support.
I heard that Commissioner Lancaster. My picture's on that TV screen right there. I told him to get my best side over there. Next public hearing is on the FY 2019 Community Transportation Program Grant, Madam Manager.
Okay. Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I would like to ask our director, Mr. Joel Strickland, to come forward and share with us this information before the public hearing.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioners, for letting me come and present to you tonight. It's the time of year again where we renew our administrative grant for the Community Transportation Program. This grant funds the staff salaries. It funds training, travel, office expenses, everything that goes along with these positions for our Community Transportation Program. The funding for fiscal year, and we're already looking ahead at fiscal year 19, but the funding for fiscal year 19 is $141,264. That's approximately $1,000 less than last year, so it brings down the local share by about $150. But what the state has done differently this year because of, because of their deadlines being short often, they asked us to go ahead and do a public hearing, not just for the admin grant, but also for the 5310 grant, which we currently administer or receive funds from, as well as our rope program, which funds the transportation of clients and for the system. So altogether, the amounts for the 5310 and the rope are expected to remain the same for fiscal year 19. And as I said, the local share for 5311 comes down slightly by about $150, so the local share total would come down by about $150. The grant for the 5311 program is due November 3rd, so that's why we're going ahead and presenting this to you tonight, so we can go ahead and get that application in.
Any questions? If not, I will open the public hearing. Are there any speakers?
There are no speakers.
I will close the public hearing, and Commissioner Council.
I move that we approve the submission of the fiscal year 2019 Community Transportation Program Grant application to the North Carolina Department of Transportation, and adopt the, I can't scroll that fast, the fiscal year 2019 Resolution for Public Transportation Program Funding.
Commissioner Evans.
I second that, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, you should have made that motion.
Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that.
That's your thing.
Considerative interlocal agreement between Cumberland County and the City of Fayetteville to address homelessness. Madam Manager.
Mr. Jackson's going to present the side of Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity. Staff had received a request from the Community Development Director with the City of Fayetteville, Mr. Victor Sharp, to pass this homelessness agreement on to the Policy Committee for Review, and we did that. And it was forwarded on to the full Board of Commissioners for your consideration tonight. So we've looked at this agreement and have discussed this in the past, and had different meetings back and forth with the city on it. And today, tonight, what comes forward, three basic items that really stand out from the agreement. One, to provide community-wide programs and services to address homelessness. The second, the formation of a homeless committee that will meet regularly and develop strategies to address homelessness. And then the third, to continue joint funding of a homeless management information system, data and evaluation analyst, that's the HMIS system that I think most everybody's familiar with, and associated programs and services in that vein are to help address homelessness in the, in the community. So staff, tonight, brings this to you for your consideration, and we are looking for any guidance that you may have to offer on this agreement.
Commissioner Booth.
Yeah, Mr. Jackson, this doesn't go to you or any of the people that have all these beautiful hearts and great intentions and everything, but since I've been on the school board, I think since, in fact, we chased away Mr. Faircloth, but since Mr. Lancaster was on there, we've been trying to get a definition of homeless. And there's, there's not a shortage of people and resources that want to do something for homeless. But to this day, I even asked at the last meeting, committee and public monthly meeting, someone to give me a definition of homeless. And it fluctuates daily from 500 children in the Cumberland County schools that they count as homeless if they don't go home to their mom and dad, but they go home to an aunt or an uncle or grandparent. They're not in their homes, so they're homeless. I mean, I just, I, it, it, it funds a position, and not a single homeless person gets anything from passing this right now. And so I just, it's not you, but I just think we need to get, everyone needs to sit down in this room or somewhere and define the goal. And just to say, defeat homelessness is great, but it just doesn't, I just, I don't see how this is going to do anything. And I just, I'm, I'm just at a loss. I just.
I think we, you know what, you have said at the last committee meeting, I'm not even going to put Mr. Jackson on the spot, because he would tell you, and I think community development would tell you, it's according to which agency you're talking to, whether you're talking to the feds, whether you're talking to the state, whether you're talking to local. However, however, I do agree on this. If this is going to be our program, we can define it, how we define it, if these are the funds that we use. And so if you go on with the committee, that might be the way to go. But I think that's the, that has been an issue that has vexed a lot of people, even on the day of the count, is when we do the count, what are we counting? It's just a point in time that doesn't really necessarily give you any kind of indication of, you know, what the entire issue is. Commissioner, well, I just had one question. I'll go to Commissioner Keith. We've got the information system, HMIS, it generates data, then what are we doing with the data? Who's, who, what, you know, there's a whole lot of folk who get data and put it on the shelf, and we accumulate all this stuff. Is anybody, do we have anybody using the data? Or how long are we going to collect the data to be able to get to that point? If you know that, that may be part of what you're trying to do.
Right. And it does fit into this. The data has been collected, it continues to be collected, but it also has to be cleaned and has to be maintained so that you don't have duplication, because there are multiple individuals that go to multiple providers of service throughout the community. So trying to identify those individuals, their needs, make sure they're properly screened to determine what supportive services they require. I mean, it all fits in together. So that's, that's part of determining where they're at in the community, what services they need, and how to, how to approach the issue of homelessness.
Well, I guess my next question to follow up on that is, I guess, what kind of data are we collecting? From listening to your statement, I'm collecting data of people in the community. When I'm thinking of data, it's.
The homeless.
Yeah, the homeless.
Yes.
But individuals?
Yes.
Because, I mean, I, you know, with the city police and Officer Stacy, who goes out there, trying to figure out why we need to have a whole lot more to be able to do that when that, if that's the data we collect, then we should have had a handle somewhat on that data.
If I can.
Yes.
Since we have representatives here from community development tonight, I'd like to ask Dee Taylor to go forward to answer that question.
If you can, I mean, I'm just trying to wrap my head around it.
See, she's going to think I'm picking on her again, because she tried to give me that definition a month ago. And I'm not, I'm not. I'm just trying to, like, if homeless Jimmy walks in the door at one agency, why we have to then just take his information, don't help him with anything, and then go look and see if he's reported to Glenn's agency and Amy's agency, let's just, when we get him in the door, let's, let's cure homeless Jimmy, help homeless Jimmy, because he's right there, and whatever agency has accepted him as homeless in their current definition, let's just help him. You know, I think, I think we spend an awful lot of money that could go to homeless Jimmy. I like saying that, homeless Jimmy.
Go ahead, Mr. Stacy, because he's going to be there.
So what we're hoping is eventually the homeless management information system does a lot more than just collect the demographics, but we're trying to reduce the length of time a person is homeless. So we're, we're trying to study that individual as well. They're going from place to place, why they're going from place to place, what can we do to actually resolve their homeless issue? So we place them in housing, are they returning back to homelessness? So we're trying to, we're tracking the individual as well. So we're tracking the individual, seeing what resources they're using, and we're trying to use that information so that eventually we can reduce the length of time that the individual is homeless. So it goes beyond just collecting the information.
So we collect that data on that individual. Are we cross-sectioning this with every individual to see if there are some trends or something? And so then what happens to that data?
Well, we report, we use that data for local community use. We report that mainly because it is a mandate by HUD. So we use that data to report to HUD. We send HUD several reports a year from agencies that actually receive federal and state-level funding. It is a requirement.
And I got that. That's why, that, that, I guess, is my essence, is my problem. Are we doing this to satisfy their requirement?
Yes.
Or are we using this information to do with something, to deal with it in our community? Commissioner Keith.
You're right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And let me start this by saying, Commissioner Evans and I were just talking, I was on the city council in 2001, we were talking about homelessness then. And until we identify what we're trying to fix, we're chasing our tails. Many of you have heard me say a number of times, there are four types of homelessness. There is economic homelessness, there's mental health issues, there are substance abuse issues, and there are choice issues. And we have to decide. And maybe the thing to do is to put this, since we're in partnership with the City of Fayetteville, the next year, that we maybe put this to the city-county liaison, and we direct what we're trying to do with homelessness. Because right now, we're gathering data, but we're not getting any information. I mean, that's how I feel, because we're not moving forward with a plan. Now, I am in agreement that we fund at a modest rate for this position annually. I think we've been doing this for three years now?
Two years.
Two years. Okay, two, two years. Before we make a decision in our silo up here as county commissioners, we're in this with the City of Fayetteville. And collectively, I think that our boards together, maybe through their joint city-county liaison, take this up as a discussion on definition of homelessness and what we're trying to move forward from. Because talking about it ain't fixing it. Thank you.
I'm going to come to you, Mr. Evans. Mr. Keith, I agree with you. I think that one of the reasons we want to get this interlocal agreement is going, is because there's going to be some serious changes over in the city and in the community development.
Mr. Chair, since you, since you, it's surprising me, I'm, it's surprising, there's been, there's been a lot of changes since 2001. We've been talking about it. There's changes every year in every board. We, we got to put it together.
Commissioner Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I agree with what was said, we have been talking about homelessness forever, and it doesn't appear that anything is happening. But what I do believe, in my heart of hearts, from having to attend a meeting or so regarding homelessness with the City of Fayetteville, that this would be a positive step in the right direction in gathering this information, and also gathering the information for those that are homelessness, homeless, and, and whatever definition they may fall under as being homeless, to put, to point them to the agencies that they could go to to get the help that is required of them to get out of the homeless mindset. And I'm hoping and praying that this is what this would do. And, and I believe in my heart of heart, we're probably, we are going in the right direction with this.
Commissioner.
Have we had the hearing yet?
This is not a hearing, this is just consideration. I'm doing my public hearings. You can take a motion and keep on moving.
We are hearing. I know we're all gifted and talented, but that's something we're not going to solve tonight. So I agree with, I agree with you. I agree with you. But I move that we, oh, shucks, that we approve the interlocal agreement between Cumberland County and the City of Fayetteville to address homelessness.
I second it.
Mr. Booth.
I, I agree with you. If we stop talking about it, we're really going to go backwards. So I agree that we got to keep moving on it. Would you be amenable to, and I, I don't, anyone more passionate about homelessness than Mr. Evans, so, Ms. Council, Mr. Evans, would you be amenable to modifying three, as it's presented? It says a homeless committee consisting of a member of the city council, a member of the county commissioners, an assistant county manager, governmental affairs officer, deputy city manager, chairman of Cumberland County, continuum of care, city and county community develop directors, and data and evaluation analysts will meet regularly, and then you go to the next page, it says, to coordinate. Right after it says, we'll meet with the city-county liaison committee to coordinate and develop, just add in the city council liaison, so it keeps both of the governing bodies who are paying this and having to come up with a definition, it keeps all of us looking at it. Right now, they're going to meet, and we're going to get reports. If it actually consists of the city council, the city-county liaison group being a part of this.
I would ask you, I would, I would say not to put that in there, because they're not going to be able to meet when this group meets. That, that whole body of elected officials, which is the chair, the vice chair, the mayor, the mayor pro temp, and all of that, I think that, I think that you can put another one in there, number five or something, that is discussed at the city-county.
Okay, they make the report to them then. I just say, so it goes somewhere instead of, like you said, on a shelf.
Right.
I just want it to go somewhere.
Right. So I think you can add a number four, five, whatever, and have a report, or put in there that they report back to that committee.
Because after, after they meet, there's nothing that generates anything for it to go anywhere except for possibly on the proverbial shelf, or until the next funding motion.
Mr. Keith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I know where you're going, and let me say this, ultimately, I believe that there is no other project that is made for city-county liaison, for us to get together as elected leaders to address this and move forward. I think sometimes when we start bringing in all these other agencies, it starts getting conflicting. I personally would like for this to be a, a, a project for the city-county liaison to come back and discuss it between them as elected bodies. Let's show some leadership. Let's attack this homeless issue, address what homelessness is in Cumberland County, and try to find a way to eradicate it what we can.
And I think we're all saying the same thing, but in order for that body to be able to discuss it, they got to have that data. And that homeless committee would do that. So I would say go to number, before number seven, or make it number eight, that this body, that this. body, that this local group, come to the city-county liaison, and so that's where that information is dumped into, who then can move on it.